I want to call the meeting to order. And our first order of business tonight is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. So, we will stand up and observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business that we have at hand. And then, we will be led in the pledge by Mr. Metz, our county administrator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Now, second order of business is a presentation. That's United Way of Montgomery County, Raffin, Florida. The United Way, Raffin, and Florida recently honored county employees with plaques for the generous donations for the 2014 campaign. And I think HR manager is here to accept the plaques.
Wait. Karen Edmonds. When you look back, I don't know how many years ago, when we started this all out, you never thought, looking in the future, I'd be here every day. So, on behalf of the board supervisors, we'd like to recognize our county employees with this plaque from United Way. And it states, "2013, 2014, United Way of Montgomery County, Raffin, and Florida express sincere appreciation to the largest increase in employee giving, which was third place. Montgomery County, you made the difference in our communities." And this other plaque, so Montgomery County has been a top 25 company in the giving way in Montgomery County. So, Karen, I know that you're here representing all of our employees. And it's special, it's so special, when we as a county government give to make others' lives better. And the contributions that employees give will go to a lot of places, and they will do a lot of good. And we appreciate everything, you as well, because I know there's a lot of coordination to get all this done, it just didn't happen like that. And so coordinating everything, keeping everybody on track, is a job above your regular duties and things, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, you can speak if you want.
That's fine.
The following public hearings were advertised pursuant to the laws in the Burridge section of the Runoff Times on July 13th and July 20th, 2014. The proposed ordinance amending Chapter 2 entitled Administration, and ordinance amending Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Montgomery County, amending Section 2-32 and 2-33 to allow persons owning or leasing a motor vehicle who previously filed a personal property tax return not to be required to file another return if no change in status, and by establishing a monetary civil penalty instead of a criminal violation for failing to file a return. Is Mr. McMahon, you going to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit, and then if there's any questions, the commissioner's here to answer them. Currently, what our code says under Section 2-32 is that anyone who's subject by law to tangible personal property tax is required by May 1st of each calendar year to file a return, personal property tax return, with the commissioner's office as forms furnished by her office. And what this change is proposing is, is that for people who own or lease motor vehicles who previously filed a return for that vehicle, and there's no change in situs, meaning hasn't changed worth staying, or change in status, meaning any change in ownership, shall not be required to file another return unless and until such situs and status change occurs. And the other change that's in here is that, under the current statute, if you fail to file a return and you're subject to a class III misdemeanor, you have to prove intent, which is, Mr. Tuck is very familiar with, it's tough to prove. And so, what we're proposing, you get rid of the criminal violation and make it a civil violation, or a civil penalty. So, if you fail to file a return, you will be subject to either a $10 fee or 5% of the tax assessed, whichever is greater. And so, and that fee would then be, that charge would then be put on the taxes owed and collect by the treasurer. This request was made by the commissioner's office, requesting that you make this change. And as I stated previously, she's here, and she can, you know, talk about it further on why she thinks it's a good idea, if you want to hear that.
Yep. Yeah, I have comments.
Hi. How are you all tonight? The reason I ask for it is because we send out around 50,000 personal property forms, we get back maybe half of them. And the ones that we get back are the people who tell us that there's a change, or we already know that there's a change on it. The people who don't send them back are the people who have had changes, and we need them back. So, we're tied up for the biggest part of March, April, May, June, putting in order and entering into the system, the notes that people write on their forms, or, you know, if they have, if they've sold a car, or something like that, they'll tell us every once in a while. Sometimes they just sign them and send them back, and they're wrong from the get-go. So, I think it will make it easier on my office to process the forms. Then, we'll have time to go out and find the information that we need for the ones that should have sent them back and didn't.
Okay.
It's going to cut, it's going to cut the amount of personal property forms that we have to handle, I would say, at least in half, if not more.
Oh, questions?
Yeah. Does this have anything to do with, for instance, a car, and if you trade cars, or if you trade two or three cars during the same year, do you pay taxes? Although, as far as I can recall, we pay tax on what we already have.
It is still based on January the 1st until you opt out on proration, yes. So, it's whatever you own on January 1st, but when you go out and buy that new car, you have 60 days to tell me about it. Okay?
And if you buy it from a dealer, are they supposed to do it, or you have to do it?
I would, I would say that the personal property form is your responsibility, just like your income tax is your responsibility. I don't think that it would be the dealership's responsibility.
And where do people pick up these forms?
The forms, they'll be in my office, and until they get used to them, I think we could go by DMV list and mail forms out, reminding them that they have to file them, just, you know, just until they get used, until everybody gets used. Because it's going to be word of mouth, getting them used to filing within 60 days of change.
And?
Any change, any change, the best way is by word of mouth, because I guarantee you, taxpayers will talk about it.
You too, Gary.
Yeah, for the time being.
Okay, Mary?
Would that be something that we could eventually get put online, like a form that could be put online, that they could print out, or I don't know, eventually if we'd ever get electronic forms that we could send in, but that, to me, would be what, and then you could, it could be advertised on our website, too.
We have, we have personal property forms out there anyway on the website.
So, that would work, yep.
So, you have to have them in 30 days?
60.
60 days.
60 days, but...
You have to.
If you owned another car the first year and traded it in, you don't, you pay tax on the one that you own as of the first of the year.
Until we go to, until we go to proration, if we ever go to proration.
So, Gary, you're right, you could actually file a form and never pay taxes on it if you then sold that car at the end of the year.
Yeah, well, that's kind of a shape that I'm in. I've sold one, traded two, so, you know, I've got, had several cars, but I still have the same one. I actually have one left.
I know, but the one you have is important to me. That's the one, the one you had on January 1st is the one that's important to me.
Okay, well, you already have that.
And if everybody goes to DMV and sells the ones that they trade in, make sure they're out of your record, a lot of people leave that to the dealership, and the dealerships don't do that.
Yeah, well, I carry mine to the DMV.
Yeah. If everybody will do that, then our job will be that much easier.
But I still have only 60 days I have to report these things, as I can.
Right, right.
Yeah, other questions?
Now, this, put a benefit of the people at that's home looking at this, and to eliminate people calling and questioning. Now, the forms you mail out each spring for people to check what they own, or whatever, this is what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, because it's nothing new.
Right.
But some people at home, watching, will get confused and want to know, they getting ready to tax us again on something.
No.
You know, and so...
No, it's not a new tax, it's just a new way of reporting.
Of reporting, so...
And constantly doing it so that we can keep up with what's going on.
And everybody at home, don't have a computer, they don't know how to print out stuff. Now, if you stop mailing out the forms, working a pickup of form...
They can pick it up in my office.
In your office, okay.
They can call, and we'll mail it out to them. Okay? We'll, we will get them a form if they need.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that somewhere within this organization, that we could find somebody that can fix something, somebody to pull off the internet.
Yeah, but a lot of the old people I deal with, Gary, if you tell them to go to the internet, they look at you like you're crazy, and say...
Well, and I understand that part, too.
You get some of it, too, right.
I also, I think there are two things I would need to take care of.
She said, she said it was on the internet, right?
We are, we are slowly going to a system that will have a change of address form on it, and a, and a place where you can change the vehicle that you own. It's municipal.
And it...
It's citizens.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it would help also, not put any more, more work on the roof and hurt people, is to have a little something on our Public Assets channel about reporting this. A lot of people look, so, God, if I don't change anything, I don't have to report anything, and they're not going to mail me this every year or something. Just something to...
And they think that they don't have, if there's no change, they think they don't have to send it back anyway, most people, most, a lot of people.
But I signed mine.
The ones who do, I really appreciate, the ones who don't, you know, the information's out there, we just have to go find it.
I sort of signed mine, sent it back in and everything, because I don't want to pay anything extra, I don't want to be picked up, you know, for that little yellow form, you know, so. Guys, any more questions for them? Now, we're going to, yeah, we're going to open it up to any kind of public comment at this time. Anyone who would like to comment on the proposed ordinance amendment in Chapter 2 that we just discussed, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Send on one coming forward, we will close the public hearing. The next item on our agenda is public addresses. If anyone in our audience who'd like to address the board on any kind of issue dealing with county business, please do so at this time. And again, you have five minutes, and direct all your comments to the board. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public address session and go to the addendum. And I see...
Mr. Chair, we do have one addendum this evening to add to the consent agenda, if the board would consent to that, and it's a contribution to the Dixie Ponytail Youth Softball World Series travelers. This is consistent with what we did with the group, I believe it was two years ago.
And about, well, I think, I can remember doing something about three times, two or three times before.
Shawson and Auburn, maybe, both the team.
Yeah, there was a Blacksburg group, too, that tried to give us a plaque or something, you remember?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the, this is the Ryner group.
Yeah, maybe the second time for them.
The Auburn group.
Yeah.
Okay. I know Blacksburg Group won the state, if I'm not very mistaken. So, my thinking is, you've got to be careful, how much dollars are we giving out, because there's several of them, anymore, there's, we're kind of a hotspot here for...
It is. The reason that we sponsor this group is this is the group that's organized through the county's Parks and Recreation Program. The Blacksburg, the other groups are different organizations.
Blacksburg was through, I got a grand, my, my niece has got a granddaughter that played on one of them, that just got beat by a Blacksburg, and they were going to the, whichever one of them won that last game, got to go to state.
But I don't, the Blacksburg team wasn't part of the county's Parks and Recreation program.
I wonder how they got to play.
I don't know.
They may have been through the Blacksburg's park, and they were playing against other rec...
The, well, the rec programs play each other, I know that, but...
I do know that they, they played, because they, in regular season, came from Ryner, which is what it was.
Right.
Beat the team from Blacksburg. But then, from the playoffs, they turned around.
Do you know specifically which teams?
Well, the, he was right, the Blacksburg Dixie program is through Blacksburg, but they play in the same regular season.
League.
Yeah, there's Eastmont, usually as a team if they have enough girls, and then Auburn, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, all have teams. Sometimes they have two teams, depending on how many girls are signed up.
Yeah, that's...
This one was a special one, and we did the same thing we did in 2012, through the same team, who won the district, the state, and this is the World Series.
Yeah, what they do is, after the regular season, they make an All-Star team for each of the communities, and then they...
And this is...
...will be here somewhere, and I think Carol, not Carol, Patrick may be in that. And then, they win that, and they go to state, and then this team actually won state now, they're going to Louisiana, playing the World Series.
That's good.
I think it has nine states, just, somewhere else.
That's good.
Kansas State, so...
Okay. I guess we need a...
I'd maybe add it to our...
A consent agenda?
I would, but as far as our consent agenda, because I, in regards to AEP aspect of things, I was asked to pull that out. I know it's no longer a decision as far as where the line is going, but I am both, my family's corporation is in ongoing discussions, plus a client is in ongoing discussions with AEP and the price that they should be receiving, and so, as a board member, I just don't feel comfortable with that, and so, I would ask to pull that out of the consent agenda, if that would be possible.
Okay. You're making a motion to, for the consent agenda, for everything but the AEP part of it.
And adding this.
And adding this.
Yes.
Okay, you understand what he's...
Seconding.
Okay. Is it any discussion, since we have a second, on the consent agenda?
We'll make sure that we're ready and able to play the other thing when it gets out.
Okay. Would the clerk please call and roll?
Mr. Tuck?
For the consent agenda with AEP removed, it must be a vote of aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
I would like to have a discussion on what AEP was going to be on that.
We will, we are. We took it out. It's, it's...
We'll schedule a vote.
Yeah.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. I guess, now, I guess we can discuss AEP.
Marty, do I need to step down, or not be part of the discussion?
Yeah, just, if you want to stay out, just don't, just be...
Whichever, I'll, my choice.
We're only scheduling a public hearing.
Yeah, we can...
But if you want to stay completely out of it, I understand.
AEP as a, as a separate item, and then at that particular time, you can abstain for voting, or whatever.
Clerk? I'm just setting a public hearing for the August, 2nd August meeting, on three easement requests.
Nikki, do you have a...
Well, I think if we was going to talk about the AEP now, we should probably vote on the consent agenda, and the AEP will go under new business.
I think that last vote, correct me if I'm wrong, was to approve the consent agenda with adding this to the addendum and pulling the AEP, is that right?
And pulling it under new business.
Pull it under new business.
So, we put AEP on the new business.
Okay. So, we covered, that last vote covered all that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm still in vacation.
Go back here and see, this is...
So, we'll do old business.
Well, this tourism policy alone, it's hard to get through.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's long, but it's simple.
Old business, subject A, Amendment to the Tourism Organizational Cooperative Agreement.
Mr. Chair, we actually discussed this at the MTD, we actually discussed this with the board at a public hearing back in December, and to be honest with you, it fell off the list of things to follow back up on. In the meantime, Christiansburg and Blacksburg have approved the amended agreement with the changes as noted here, and it's basically to deal with how the members are appointed to the MTDC, and the process for receiving the tax revenues and the true-up each year. That's basically all that was changed from the agreement that was adopted a couple of years ago. But all three jurisdictions, the two towns and the county, have to adopt the same agreement for it to be binding on everybody, so it came to our attention that we'd never put that back on the agenda for a vote, so that's why that's here tonight.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call and roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
New business, subject A, Amendment to the Personnel Policies, Revision to the County's Personnel Policies and Procedures.
Mr. Chair, under tab C, you have a summary of the proposed changes to the Personnel Policies and Procedures. Nearly all of these relate to the addition of the hybrid group of employees, which is required by the changes to the Virginia retirement system. That required changes in some of our leave policies related to hybrid employees, and it also addresses several housekeeping changes, a few titles and whatnot, but I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any, and Karen Edmonds is here tonight to answer any that you may have as well.
Board members? Well, I can say, and it seemed like it sort of skips your mind, but when you start reading to all the types of leave that's, that's in our policies and things, and not only in ours, but probably in a whole lot of the municipalities and things, and then, you know, you get this hybrid thing, it's almost like, while you're reading this stuff, and you're talking about the hybrid employees, it's almost like you're getting aliens in here from another planet. That term, hybrid, you know, Plan One, Plan Two, and Hybrid, you know, I don't know what they coming up with next, but I don't have any problems with what I read. I'd like to say one thing. Gary, I appreciate you answering them questions for me today.
Well, absolutely.
I know you just got off of vacation, I worried you deaf this morning over this, but I appreciate it.
Well, absolutely. It's, it is confusing, and as, as I told Supervisor King, you know, once or twice, I had to go back and reread, and on one of them, I went to Karen, and I said, "All right, let me ask you," because I appreciate what Chair Brown said, it is confusing, and it gets more confusing every year. And this isn't something that we just dreamed up, that we thought we'd add to the personnel policies. These are things that are being mandated by the state, that we're having to adjust our policies to. But it is confusing, and I want to commend Karen and her folks. I know that we've looked at several other jurisdictions and what they were doing, we've done quite a few round-the-horn discussions with other localities to see how they're addressing it, and it's, it's a new day for all of us with some of this stuff.
And really, the way I was looking at it, is that you got the hybrid employee here, and you got Plan One and Plan Two, and you start reading through them, you want to try to make sure that this new employee is not getting screwed some way because of the leave policies and things, and then, you look in, this kicks in, and that kicks in, like the hybrid people, the sick leave bank, for one example, you know, but you have...
Short-term disability.
Short-term disability. So, I think it balances itself out, you know?
What's the best we're going to do with what the government gives us?
Absolutely, absolutely.
At that point, we don't...
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call and roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B, FY 2015 Revenue Sharing. And this is, I guess, to do with our half and DMV's half, or VDOT's half, or whatever.
This is to provide our match of $500,000 for the revenue sharing for fiscal year 2015. $250,000 of that is designated for Mount Pleasant Road, $250,000 is designated for Brush Creek Road. As you can see, we're appropriating $478,365. There was $21,635 left in revenue sharing funds at the end of fiscal year 14, so we're just rolling that over to match the remainder for the $500,000 for 2015.
Motion? Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call and roll?
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs? Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject C, Authorized Donation of Christiansburg Fire Engine 9 to the Newport Fire Department.
So moved?
I just was curious, I know it's a 1988 fire truck, what is the, maybe it was in, I didn't see it, what's the estimated value? I know, on a fire truck that's, what, 26 years old, should we just be thanking them for taking it from us?
Well, the thing about it is that, I'm going to have to credit this with Chief Wills, the ISO rating, the Insurance Service Office rating, and I thought that, my own personal opinion, that if you had a fire truck, if it was made in 1950, and it was sitting in the fire station, and it had 500 miles on it, that it would still be a, a good truck. But the way the Insurance Service Office is, is that trucks, I think it's 20 or 25 years old, it starts counting against your rating, and so, and the fire technology and safety changes, that's the reason why they want people to change them. And then, in our Fire and Rescue Commission meeting, the commission were... it's 20 or 25-years-old, it start counting against your rating, and so, and the fire technology and safety changes, that's the reason why they want people to change them. And then, in our Fire and Rescue Commission meeting, the commission was, was talking about the need of the Newport Fire Department, and the Newport, their jurisdiction is right up to the county line, and you got Blacksburg right up that line, and sometimes they need each other for assistance, and they said that the county and, and John's doesn't donate hardly any money to them, doesn't help them out, and so that truck would be like a, a brand-new one to them, and it was consensus of the group to go through the proposition to donate.
From our pocket, it was unanimous.
Yes, yes.
They, uh, here, before I got on the board, y'all allowed us to make a swap move, Newport, our brush truck for a couple buses so we could get educated, you know, if had a bus accident or something, and them guys over there from Newport, they love that little brush truck, I mean, they run it on everything, so they are in need, and one of them told me they get about $5,000 a year operating budget.
Wow. Thank you for answering my questions.
Motion?
Yeah, I...
Oh, I think y'all already, the made a motion, so, okay, the clerk please call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, it's time to take up, let me make sure where I'm at. I think we're on the new business, we need to take up AEP.
Yep. And it was, and it was actually the first item under your consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
Um, we did have a request on the consent agenda this evening to call for a public hearing, uh, there are three tracks, I believe, that AEP is requesting an easement across, um, and just so happens, Mr. Drury's here tonight, and I guess he could answer any questions if it comes up, but there, there've been a couple of questions about how this easement was going to affect a couple of the parcels out there on Senna Bar Road, uh, we've been working with AEP, and Mr. Drury, who's the right-of-way agent, has been very good to provide information. We did realize that we do need to schedule a public hearing, uh, in order to convey those, uh, easements for the right-of-way. Did I leave anything out, other than I know that time is of the essence for you guys? Um, so this, this is simply to call for the public hearing on the August, um, calling for the public hearing on August 25th, and then with any comments that would be received that night, we'd take final action at our first meeting in September, which I believe is September 8th.
So moved.
Second.
To set the date for the public hearing on the AEP for the August date.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, any discussion? The clerk please call a roll.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
At this point in time, I'll abstain, you know, my reason being is that at this point in time, my family's corporation, in which I have a substantial amount, is in negotiations with AEP involving this power line, and then in addition to that, I'm representing clients who are in negotiations with AEP, and so I don't, at this point in time, wish to vote on this, this subject.
Mr. Curry?
Yeah, we're going to have some discussion when we're staying after this.
Wouldn't we have the public hearing on the 25th, yes, sir?
Nothing tonight.
No, this is just a call for the public hearing now.
Okay, aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes, I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Can you join us on the 25th of August? Can you join us on the 25th of August? Thank you.
Okay, time for the county attorney's report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just one item, uh, I just wanted to check, see if the board was interested in, uh, adopting a policy to allow, um, a limited participation in board meetings through electronic communication. There's been an amendment, uh, in the Freedom of Information Act allowing localities in a limited fashion to allow a member to participate electronically from a remote location. Before you can do that, the political body has to approve a policy, um, the policy has to, uh, has to be consistent with the state law, and, and, and what state law says is that what, what's required is on before the day of a meeting, a member who, who is interested in taking advantage of this, uh, is required to notify the chair that such member is unable to attend the meeting and is unable to attend for three reasons, one would be a medical condition on her part or his part that prevents them from physically attending the meeting, or some type of emergency, or some type of private, uh, personal matter. However, the person who's, who's making this request has to identify with specificity the nature of emergency and personal matter, uh, and, and that would actually be put into the, into the minutes for the board meeting. Uh, the public body that's holding the meeting has been, you know, needs to put it in that specific request into the minutes, uh, and it becomes part of the record. Um, the, before you can do it, the, uh, you have to make sure you have a forum in place at, at the physical location. You also have to make arrangements that the person who's wants to do it remotely, their voice is heard throughout the meeting for everybody to participate, so if, that we'd have to be able to, not just you, but the audience would have to be able to hear, uh, that person making comments or speaking. Also, you're limited to only doing it twice on a calendar basis, and so if the third time it came up, you would not be eligible to do it. Um, and, and, and the other thing that's important is you can't, when you're, when you do this policy that'd be consistent with what I just talked about, um, those are the only things you, you consider when someone makes that request, and, and what I mean by that is you're not allowed to consider who's making the request, and you're also not allowed to consider what's on or on the agenda for that meeting, what may be voted on, and so someone who, uh, and, and what I mean by that is you wouldn't want to turn somebody down, or, or someone shouldn't be taking advantage of this because of what's on the agenda, they should be doing it because there's a physical problem or mental condition, I mean, a medical condition, some type of emergency, or some type of, uh, personal matter that requires them to be gone. Now, this doesn't mean vacation time at NAGZAD or something like that where you're going to just call in, but this would entail the, uh, if you were sick or injured at home and couldn't, let's say you broke your leg, couldn't get around, you could call in on one of those meetings. Another one would be if you had a family member who was seriously hurt or injured or sick away from, uh, from the area, you had to go up there and stay with them, you could then call in once or twice, uh, but it wouldn't be where you're just going up to visit, and you're going to miss the meeting, or you're going out of town on business, that's not what this is intended to cover. Any questions, or, and I'm trying to give feedback whether you're interested, if you're not, we don't need to do anything, if you are, we'll bring back the policy at a next meeting for you to consider.
I kind of like the idea in case, uh, someone couldn't attend a meeting, and, and I know it's not supposed to consider what's on the agenda, but at the same time, if somebody was, you had a family member, you had an aunt, an uncle that your, or mother, or father, or child, and you still wanted to be, participate, this would give you that opportunity, and, and I like that idea, um, that you could still participate, not saying that you would necessarily, I mean, there's some of us that if you're at home or you're visiting a loved one who's in the hospital, you may not be up to, uh, participating, but it would at least give you that option.
Yeah, I can say from personal experience, when I was first on the board and, um, and I had a real, um, my parents were in, in a bad situation with my father having to have a caregiver and my mother being literally flat on her back in the hospital, and, um, I remember driving all the way from Northern Virginia here, getting out of the car, going to the meeting, and turning right about, getting back in the car and driving up there, and had to pay someone to stay with my mom at the hospital because she was critically ill. I think because of that, knowing what I went through, um, it, you know, I think it's a good thing, and I don't see it as something that could easily be abused either by what Marty was saying, um, it would have to be for like a really, like a critical issue, or like, uh, you know, like my hip replacement, like what if, what if I hadn't recovered as fast as I had, but yet I would have been able, if, you know, I had to stay at home for some reason, or I was in a rehab place or something, but I could still hopefully mentally make decisions, so, um, I could see where it could be beneficial.
And it's something the board would police itself, that would, like, if you believe someone's making a request and it doesn't fit under, uh, the policy, then you would vote, and if you vote no, to not let them participate, then that would then go into the minutes as well, and that person would not be able to participate remotely, so, so you, in essence, you, you would be pleased with yourself.
Oh, I mean, you got a comment too, Mike?
I just, you know, I'm kind of on the other street of what the last two have said. I don't know how you can have folks out there that, you know, it seems to me that you need to be here in order, but it's the way our constitution's set it up, you know, uh, if you're a state senator or something, you can't call and you vote. Uh, I don't, I know we're not state senators, and we're not, uh, federal legislators of any kind, and, but at the same time, I think we should operate under the same rules that they have to operate on when it comes to when we vote on something, uh, I could be down for tomorrow, or for whatever, you know, if I don't make it, then I don't make it, but if I care enough about it and think it's worth enough time, I'm going to, I'm going to be there, so, I just, you know, I don't think that's what our, our forefathers come up with when they set up governments.
And I agree with you a lot, Gary, but in this day and time, when you could even, we could set up a Skype, you could even see the person potentially, um, I don't think our forefathers were thinking about the internet.
Well, here's the problem with that, you've got people that, when there's something that's important to us, it's probably important to the folks that come, and if you're somewhere and just vote, no, you don't get to hear that part of it.
Why wouldn't you? Yeah, you can.
Why wouldn't you?
Where they would be speaking into the mics, I mean, we may not be able to do it technology-wise, and maybe we should be also making sure to talk with Josh, but it seems like if we had public speakers, we could, they would be talking into microphones. I was assuming that you would be on the speakerphone, there would be a microphone on you, and then you would also be hearing what other folks are saying.
So we're going to take with us to Richmond or Kalamazoo or wherever it may be.
Just that one number.
Of something that...
This right here, you could do FaceTime or Skype, um, and if you have an internet access, and, and, you know, I'm trying to think about the way I would feel, now, my parents are here locally, so I wouldn't be having to take care of them, my kids are going to school here locally, but I don't know where they're going to end up, but I know that if they were in the hospital, and that's, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not talking about vacations, there's me and an attorney and my, I got a jury trial that goes late, that, that's work, that's not an emergency, but I'm talking really more of family situations, um, in the life, I'm trying to think about what, what, to treat people the way I would want to be treated, and I want that opportunity to be able to attend, and I'm not saying that it's going to work out, maybe if you look at it technology-wise, it doesn't, but I, I have a friend who lives in Minnesota, and we Skype with him almost every Tuesday, and it's very easy.
Right.
I'm going to be the furthest away from trying to figure out what this is or something that's on my loved one, and I have to go, the heck with this, I'm done.
But what happened, Gary, is that if, you wouldn't have to carry anything to Richmond with you, you weren't to carry anything, anything, if you were, if the board agreed for you to dial into this meeting from a, a, a distance from a, um, a hospital or wherever, we'll provide you the number, the county will provide you the number to dial in from your phone and into a, I guess, a conference call speaker-type-like phone, so you don't have to carry anything with you but a phone to dial that number into the, to the meeting, so it's very, uh, simple, just like, uh, the conference call we do.
Why would you even carry anything? You could make, you know, if you're going to just make it to where you could vote on something, you could do that, you could say, "Here's my vote for the night," and goodbye.
But, uh, I mean, this is like, you, you are a representative of your district.
That's right.
Family, to me, comes first, and then this comes second, and if I'm down at Bronwood Memorial Hospital with my wife in critical condition, and it's critical for this group of people, for your vote, to vote on this thing, and it could be your vote to make it go one way or the other, and, and the constituents you serve sometime, they don't give a crap what's happening in the, the voter's life, I mean, not in the voter's life, but the, the representative's lives, you just wasn't there to represent us on this issue, but I was at a film, I don't care, but...
That don't even hold in a lot, Bill, because if you were, if you were the final vote, then it's going to be a three-three vote, and, and you, you're going to put it off into the next meeting, I mean, that's just how that works.
Well, it could be a three-two vote, too.
Well, then you're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, a three-two, I mean, I mean, a, a three, I mean, a three, yeah, three, three.
Yeah.
A four-two, something like that, but what I'm saying, it's, 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 uh, now, I can go either, with me, I could go either way, we could have a policy or we cannot, it, uh, whichever the majority of the board by giving consensus would further him to go on and produce a policy, and so it's either here or there with me, if it is, fine, if it's not, still fine, and what do you think, Lynette?
I just think it, um, it's a very good thing, there are many times when, um, I represent, uh, someone when in VACO, and there's an emergency, I can't get there, I can dial in, um, it's nothing to dial in, everybody can hear you, that's at the meeting, because you'd be hooked into the PA system, it's just another opportunity for people who want to be present at a meeting but can't be, that for whatever those reasons are, they have the opportunity to participate, and it doesn't mean you have to, it doesn't mean you're going to, it doesn't mean anything, it's just if you really need it and want it, then it can happen, it's not like you miss a meeting, it's for a, a particular incident or for a particular, um, um, meeting, I mean, it's not one of those things that, to me, it's just, it's a no-brainer because you just are used to doing this for numbers of, of, of things, so, uh, meetings that you go to, so, um, it's not a, it's not really a, a real controversial thing if you stick to what is here and what it says, is there are certain reasons, that does have to be the reasons, and it's not like you just miss a meeting.
You know, I just have been brought up that that's what you do is, you know, you're supposed to be at a meeting to make it or you lose it, and that's, that's kind of how I am, and, you know, just...
Sometimes that may, sometimes that may be true, I understand that, but I'm just saying that if, for whatever reason, people have to because of emergencies, and yet you want to be there, and you want to participate, and you want your constituents to know that, and you want the people in the audience to know that, and you want your fellow board members to know it, um, then, fine, but it's not something you're going to use every day or every, every time you turn around.
You could, you know, if you're going out of town, you could let...
I don't mean that, I don't mean that at all, I mean, if, if there's a real emergency, a real emergency.
If it's a real, real emergency...
No, if it's a real emergency...
If it's a real, real emergency, you're probably not going to want to feel like...
Probably not, but the opportunity is there for people who want to avail themselves of it, it's just another means of, uh, being able to be a part of a meeting.
And, and that's fine, I mean, I, that's just not how I feel.
Maybe you're sick yourself, maybe you're in, in the hospital, you've had surgery, well, might be helpful, might not be, I, I had a hip replacement too, just like Ms. Biggs, but, and I didn't come to the meetings, but it, uh, we can hear it on TV, we can do a lot of things.
I think it's just down to how much you want to do what you're doing, I can tell you this, when I had the casual... I can tell you this, when I had the cancer operation, on the seventh day we had a meeting here and I was here.
Well, that may be true.
So, you know, it don't...
But I'm saying it's not, may not be true for everybody and everything.
And I guess, Gary, if you were going through the chemotherapy therapy and where if you were exposed to people where you might be more susceptible to getting a cold or, or things like that that could really affect you, I want to give you that opportunity to be able to do it from home. But I, like I said, I, I, that's where I'm coming from. Now, I will drag myself, I don't plan on missing. I've missed one because of, of the field trip, but in the three years I've been on the board, that's the meeting I've missed as far as this board. Now, I've missed some PA, PSA meetings. Um, I don't intend to miss, uh, but at the same time, I guess I was trying to look at people who might be in different situations than me. But I, I would like to at least look at it and, and reserve it for, you know, not because you have to go to a field trip and not because you, you gotta go off for a business trip, but because you're going to a funeral of a loved one or you're going to visit, you see somebody that's in the hospital or you're physically ill and are gonna meet, maybe we only use one meeting instead of two a year, but we at least look at it. I, that's where I'm at.
Todd, you, okay, you okay? Uh, now, I think what, what we need is a consensus, to give him a consensus.
And we just did them.
And so, one, two, three, four, five, you got it.
Thank you, Marty.
Okay. Uh, county administrators report.
Mr. Chair, just coming back from a nice week of vacation last week and I don't have a report again tonight.
I guess the only complaint you have is the vacation was too short, huh?
It was short, but it was nice to think about things other than emails and hybrid employees and things like that for a week.
Okay, Supervisor Perkins.
No report.
Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I think I mentioned, uh, I don't know how many, a couple of meetings ago, about this Forest Service Road thing that was going on and, so anyway, on July 10th, we, um, Mr. Meadows and I met with Darrell Sowers from VDOT and we met with, um, the ranger, Woody Litz, from the, um, Forest Service and, um, at that point in time, there seemed to be some question as to who owned the first part of the Forest Service Road, whether it was VDOT or the Forest Service. But it was a very positive meeting because both of the, um, representatives from the Forest Service and VDOT seemed to really want to work to make the road better so that it could be used by, by, well, there's actually someone that lives on the road, but also by the person that was trying to maintain the family cemetery and was worried if, if anyone else died, you know, how would you get a hearse up the road, that kind of thing. Well, so everything was moving along, except I never did hear back who owns the road. And Ms. Edmonds said we would probably know something, uh, beginning of the week, which is now, so I just wondered if there was any update. If there's not, then I would like to request that the county administrator get someone from staff to call VDOT and find out when we're gonna know.
Already did this afternoon and I've not heard back.
Well, so now what do we do to get them to answer?
That's a good question.
Well, just put it in the newspaper.
I did, I did email Mr. Sowers this afternoon and thanked him again for getting that together and to let us know when he had more information and as of now, I haven't heard anything back.
Well, let's see. Today's the 28th and July 10th was the meeting, so that's 18 days ago. And I believe that the Forest, the Forest Ranger had the plots from the, that they had, so I'm not, what would be taking so long to figure out who owned it, do you think?
Couldn't answer that question.
Well, can we call them again tomorrow and say that we had the meeting tonight and that I asked?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, 'cause I guess that's the best thing to do, just sort of keep on it. Okay, and, um, 'cause it was a very productive meeting. It was really, really a good meeting. I learned a lot at that meeting that I didn't know, so, about, you know, roads and the Forest Service. And then the only other thing I wanted to report to you guys, um, when I went to the June 26th meeting of the New River Community Services Board, they went over, first of all, their finances are looking good, so that's a good thing, but they went over the code changes, you know, that we all heard about during the last journal assembly session due to the tragedy of the, in the Creeddeeds family and they had a little presentation on the 2014 Virginia Commitment Law Code changes. I didn't know if you might want to have a copy of it, but I would be happy to give it to Mr. Meadows, but one thing that they pointed out, that the bed registry, you know, the computerized registry went into practice on April 14th and she, um, they wanted us to be aware that it does require more travel time, some, sometimes outside the locality and that can put, um, you gotta think about that in regards to sheriff's departments, if they're involved in any of that and, um, trying to get people where they need to go. Um, also that, you know, with the emergency custody, uh, order, you know, that it's been increased to, uh, the eight-hour period and we were told that here in our locality, the average time that they get everything resolved is 4.3 hours. So I thought that was interesting, you might like to know that. And, um, the notification, there seemed to be a, something as to not everyone was working with their local law enforcement, like, um, to notify, like when the law enforcement people would pick people up, maybe the, um, community services board was not notified. Well, our locality had already been doing that and had been for a while, so we were already doing that. So if you all, um, do you want me to give this to Mr. Meadows to maybe, I, I don't know if you're interested in that kind of thing, but these are the new changes. They did a little slideshow on it. Do you want me to pass that on? Okay. And that's, that's all.
Supervisor Tucker.
No report.
Supervisor King.
I just have a couple of things. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the county staff for all the hard work they done on the auction they had last Friday, the surplus auction. I mean, they worked for several days to get everything built up, took down there. They done a real good job, they really did. Same with all, uh, me and Cheryl Brown had a meeting with, uh, the citizens out on Old Sire Wood the other night and it went, it went pretty well, it did. I mean, we had a good crowd out there and they're still frustrated about the road. Uh, and we actually, we really need to do something about it, so I'll cut it off here and let Cheryl Brown finish it. Yeah, I got out of the line though, didn't I?
Yes, you did. Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Creed.
Yes, I, I don't really have anything other than, if someone here knows or can tell me maybe after the meeting's over, which one of these different colors represents what on this AEP mapping that they sent out on the pictures that tells you, I thought it was supposed to tell you where the poles were at, but it doesn't do that, so it's got some other, some other reason there and I don't, if anybody knows, I'd like to know.
Well, if Mr. Drury doesn't mind sticking around for a minute, he can probably...
I'm sorry, I have a question.
He's got a question on the mapping that was provided with the AEP easement stuff.
Uh, the mapping that we provided was the black and white easement, uh, drawing. The color mapping was actually produced by your, your own...
Yeah, we seen, we seen the color mapping at the general review meeting, Mary, not...
Yeah, G.I. Stack took the files from AEP and made that, but I believe you can probably look at the line from it and address Mr. Creed's question.
Once the meeting's over.
We've got one thing.
Thanks, thanks, Ken.
And then I guess it's, it's left up to me. Uh, like Mr. King said, we met Wednesday night over at the Bronner Fire Station with about 14 citizens from the Sal, Old Sire Wood Road and, uh, the way that they expressed themselves, dirt glue is the worst thing that's ever been invented by man, uh, said is the dust is worse than it's ever been. Uh, they could dust their houses the next day and walk in and you could run your finger across furniture and see the dust on it. They talked about, uh, the dust getting on the automobiles and it can't get it off. I mean, you scrub and, and some gentleman there was talking about his two vehicles that it sticks on and, and you almost like have to have a brillo pad or something to get it off and it ruins the finish and, and so forth. I've seen a, an email from Rebecca Muma from the transportation, school transportation department, it must've been in April, I believe, that I think she sent it to you and we got a copy, and it was telling Supervisor King that the dirt glue got on the school buses and it couldn't wash it off, they had to scrub it off. You know, that's just how, how bad it is out there. And they said it's some places out there that's probably about this big where it smoothes and the rest of it's potholes and washboards and so forth. They have some heart patients that live on, uh, elderly people and heart patients that who breathe in that dust, uh, as it go out through there. And there's a couple that said they're about to have a young child in about three months and they wonder about the long-term effects of them breathing in that dust. Uh, there's a, a lot of little notes are made. Then all of this is, uh, on this picture here, is just a white powder from the dirt glue all up through there, what she's explaining to me. So what I say to my fellow board members, we really need to work with our county staff to find some remedy and some relief for the people, uh, who live out there on Old Sire Wood. Uh, I didn't think it was as bad as it was. Todd had talked a couple of times and mentioned it, until you listen to the people out there and, uh, some of these people were elderly and, uh, expressing their concerns about the dust and the safety and so forth. So whatever we, we need to do to get them some relief out there, uh, we need to try to do it.
Well, were there any arrangements made, you know, this was put down to, maybe you should explain what we're talking about, Ken.
We're talking about the, the, the dirt glue project for Old Sire Wood Road.
Right, and how long did it, you know, what's the length of, of the project, you know? How much road is messed up?
About a mile long.
How much?
About a mile long.
Part of, part of it was the, the surface treatment, which is like a pavement, but not quite the same. And then part of it was a, a dust remediation product that, that had been recommended and it was done, that project was done as a revenue sharing project, which means the county put up part of the funds and VDOT put up part of the funding for the project. Um, the, the dirt glue folks are aware of the issues and as a matter of fact, and I hadn't even had a chance to share this with, uh, the board chair and supervisor King, um, Dan Brew, who helped coordinate the project for the county, has been in contact with the dirt glue folks and they are aware of the issues and are continuing to try to address it. Um, that being said, I have asked for a meeting, um, later this week with Dan and, um, with the board chair and Supervisor King, because I do believe the folks in that area have been very patient with us in trying to get that resolved and I'm concerned that, well, not concerned, I am aware that apparently last week at the meeting, there's several residents down there that are not happy at all and we need to, we need to come up with a plan on how to address it.
You know, I've had, I've had a couple of them actually call me. And they said, you know, if we can't get anything, can you come out there and just scrape what's on there up? Get it gone, let it slide. You know, that shouldn't do that without spending a whole lot of money.
They have, they have written letters to the delegates, several of the delegates and maybe a senator or two, 'cause I've read, uh, the letters that they written and I think they got what like a one or two sentence response to them and things like this and this is, you know, we just can't get anywhere. We're writing to people in Richmond and our representatives and that. And, uh, I guess, uh, to my own personal opinion, it's a local project, it's a local thing that the county sort of initiated and so we should be the ones to fix it, if it's not right.
But I would think that VDOT, being that they were part of putting it down, should be the ones to take it up if we was to buy the gravel to put in there and be through with it.
Again, it's a revenue sharing project, so...
So we have to come up with half of it and then come with the other half.
If we decide to make changes, as long as we cover our half, my guess is they'll step up and cover theirs, but, um, we just, we need to, we need to get some answers from the dirt glue folks because apparently they've continued to come back with reasons, you know, that this didn't work or that didn't work, but that project was done. It's been about a year, I guess. It was done late in the season last year, but, um, I understand the, the citizens in that area are not happy.
No, they're not.
Well, they're talking...
But they don't want much, you know, that's not like asking, they're not asking for an interstate, they're asking for, at least the ones that I talked to said, you know, get rid of, come in and scrape this out, take it to the dump somewhere, do whatever you need to do, dispose of it and just put some gravel back there.
That's...
Give us what we started with.
That's right. Give us what we started with and they would be happy.
And I'd invite any of you to go out there, I've been out there five times, but take an old car, 'cause I took my truck out there and I had to take it to the shop, 'cause we got a steamer and that's the only way our stuff would come off. I mean, I drove slow, probably 15 mile an hour up through there and it covered it.
And, and I agree with it, I'm sorry, Mary.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I was just gonna say, yeah, we have responsibility, I think VDOT has responsibility, but the, the part that's really not sitting well with me is, first, it's causing damage to personal property, but the, the other part is if it's doing that to the outside of a truck, what is it doing to people's lungs when they inhale it? What is it doing for someone that has respiratory disease or asthma or, I mean, what is in that dust? I have no idea. I don't know what's in dirt glue and what's in the dust and to think that we have a situation where we're doing the opposite of public welfare, we're doing, it, I, that is really making me uncomfortable and I, I think we need to do something about it quickly.
Mr. Duck.
You know, we tried something, we believed it was gonna be a product that could save a lot of, we have a lot of unpaved roads in Montgomery County. It did not work, but we voted on it and it may have been a unanimous vote, I haven't gone back to look at things, and we've gotta fix it.
We got to.
You know, a lot of times we say the state caused something, this caused something, this is one that, where we took a chance on something.
We caused it, that's right.
And so we need to fix it and that's where I'm at.
And right now it just doesn't matter who started it or who proved it. We need to send, uh, if nothing else, we'll just come up with the paved driveways, send them, scoop it up and get rid of it. They'd do it in a day. Now, VDOT is like they're mine. You know, someone like Billy wants to get in there and do it, wouldn't have much to...
All, all I could, all I can say is this, Mr. King went out there and drove slow and he had to take his vehicle to the shop to steam it off. Can you imagine driving back, driving from work to and from work daily? What the buildup on your vehicle would be by the time the weekend got here?
This is something that's gone on for a pretty good while, too, because it's been a while since they called me. I told them to come.
Well, they have, they have, nothing out there.
They've been patient, I can say. Yeah, they've been patient, 'cause I think it might've been April, March, April or sometime like that when it started coming to light, maybe April or something like this. But it's a elderly lady out there and she's probably been in this boardroom, uh, and she was sitting in there and I think she was talking to former supervisor Pilatus, Pilatus one night, and I'll never forget her, but she's feisty and I listened to her on Wednesday night.
Craig, can we ask you to, and the administration, to investigate what we...
Well, absolutely.
And offer some alternatives to...
That, when we get the meeting set up with Dan Brew later, that's exactly what we're gonna do.
Good, good.
Well, if we have no other business, uh, I think it's time to adjourn to that.
Thank you very much.